This is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. It is 1:03 PM. This is a hybrid meeting for, if you would like to watch, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Minser, sitting in the boardroom, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards and County Manager Emilio Chavez. Today, we are going to be discussing the 2022-2023 official dockets, prioritization of officially docketed amendments. And Christina Shephard is here from CPAD, and Shephell, I apologize. And I see Director Joshua Cummings is popping in right now. County Manager, would you like to do an intro?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to the board action related to, or approving the official dockets for 2022-2023 for the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Development Code dockets. So as the staff work with the board in that process, after the board took an action to approve those dockets, those items included in the dockets, we needed to follow up on a briefing as to where the board likes to set priorities on both dockets, the Comprehensive as well as the Development Code docket. On Tuesday morning during the agenda setting, I asked the board, yesterday, to take the time and bring your own individual scoring in terms of the priorities as you see on the many different items. I hope you did that today. And I'm hoping to, with your concurrence of the board, to walk through a process. I have with me a sheet where I can probably record individual priorities by individual board members. And then I will go through an average of those scores. And if the average of those priorities by individual board members results on a tie, then probably the board needs to exercise discussion as to how you can resolve the tie. But if the average give an indication as to how the priority will be, then hopefully that will be a final conversation and that will record the final vote with your concurrence. That's the process that I'm suggesting for this afternoon conversation. If the board is okay with that, then I can ask individual commissioners to give me your individual priority numbers for each of the items.
Questions about the process?
Oh, sounds good to me.
I do have a question. As I was writing the Development Code amendments, the JP2, JP3, and JP4, I graded them as the same, but I'm not sure if we're supposed to grade them separately.
Ideally, it will be separately.
So they're...
I had the same question from Commissioner Edwards. Whether they, at the end, will be a combined effort, but ideally will be individual priorities.
Okay. I'll go ahead and renumber them then. Thank you.
Okay, maybe I can start with Commissioner Minser. You can give me your priorities, whether you can tell.
You're gonna go by Commissioner, not by item?
By Commissioner. Oh, I can go by item, whatever is preferable.
I don't know. What is preferable? Just hand you my paper. Yeah, but if, I mean, if we want to go through public accounting of it, then it doesn't matter which way, whichever way. Madam Chair should decide.
So that's a good question, whether it's by Commissioner, and then record all the priorities, all by item. And each commissioner will give me your priority.
My question is, I kind of agree. Why can't, because I have my sheet here. Why can't we just give them the sheet to you? And then why can't we just come back once everything's tallied out and we can kind of see where everything landed? Because I'm sure everyone's done their diligent way of grading on the sheet as required.
I believe everybody has done their.
I have.
Yeah, so, you know, why can't we just give you the sheet? And if not, then I guess doing it by item instead of that way, if there's any questions or discussions, I don't know.
I'd just like to record your individual priorities. And then it will take a minute just to average those.
Okay, so, let's go by item. I have it listed on our sheet.
I see Chris had her hand up there for a second.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, County Manager, I do have a spreadsheet up with each of the items and can record those and do the average on the fly for you.
Perfect. And then we'll compare notes. Just make sure that's good. You know, two eyes on the same item is always good.
Awesome.
Yeah, so...
Let's go by item, County Manager.
I'm sorry?
Let's go by item.
Okay, sounds good. So I'm going to start with the Comprehensive Plan amendments. I will list by number, in this case CPA 16 will be number one. What I have first is Commissioner Mejia, then Commissioner Minser, and Commissioner Edwards, in that order. So CPA 16, Commissioner Mejia?
Three.
Commissioner Minser?
Three.
How is that possible? I put three, too. Now, I never agreed with these guys all the way through. Something is wrong here.
That's good. Grade my things alike, I guess. CPA one. Commissioner Mejia?
Uh, one.
Two. Nine. At least it shows it isn't a made-up deal.
CPA four.
Uh, six.
Seven.
Seven.
Six.
CPA six.
Four.
Nine. Seven.
Seven. Okay. CPA seven A.
Two.
One. One.
CPA eight.
Five.
Two.
CPA twenty.
Seven.
Six. Four.
CPA twenty. There's the, yeah, line use, I think, yeah. Should be twenty-one, that?
Twenty-one.
CPA twenty-one, thank you. CPA twenty-one.
Eight.
I'll be damned, I've got eight, too. That's crazy.
And CPA twenty-two.
Nine.
Five.
We're having a hard time with Commissioner Minser's mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nine. So nine, nine, and five? Yeah. Okay, Chris, give me the average.
We need to go back to CP eight. CPA eight for Commissioner Minser.
CPA eight?
Oh, CPA eight?
Four.
Four.
Okay, and I also did not get CPA twenty-one.
Twenty-one is eight, eight, eight.
Oh, okey-dokey. All right.
You and I can average that.
Decimals are okay. Give me that.
Okay, so, starting at the top?
Yeah. Please confirm the votes and then the average.
Sure. So I've got the votes of three, 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 with an average of three.
The computer spit that one right out.
CPA one, the votes I have recorded are one, two, nine, with an average of four.
Give me the decimals if, for any chance less than decimals, okay?
Okay, I will. For CPA four, I have six, seven, six, with an average of six point three three.
Go ahead.
CPA seven A.
CPA six.
Six.
Six, sorry. Four, nine, seven, with an average of six.
No, it's four, five, seven.
Five. Seven.
Four, five, seven.
Four, five, seven, with an average of five point three three.
Okay. Seven A, CPA seven A.
Two, one, one.
Correct.
With an average of one point three three.
CPA eight.
Average of five, four, two.
Correct.
With an average of three point six seven.
CPA twenty.
Seven, six, four, with an average of five point six seven.
CPA twenty-one.
Eight, eight, eight.
That's a rough one, eight.
Yeah.
CPA twenty-two.
Nine, nine, five, average of seven point six seven.
No ties.
So, yeah, there is no ties. So what I have, so far, the CPA seven A is number one. And correct me if I am off, okay?
Yep.
The next I have is...
Aggravated two.
Aggravated is number two. That's the next online.
Countywide industrial.
The next online is the...
Industrial lands.
The industrial.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't it?
Yep. Three point six seven.
Yeah.
We probably shouldn't ought to be piping in here.
The CPA, I go by CPA eight is number three.
So, what was number, what was number two?
It's number two. Number one is CPA seven A.
Okay.
Number two is CPA sixteen.
Okay.
Number three is CPA eight.
Okay.
Number four is CPA one. Number five is CPA six. Number six is CPA twenty. Number seven is CPA four. Number eight is CPA twenty-two. And number nine is CPA twenty-one.
Yeah.
That's what I have. So just to repeat the score, and then I will ask the board to agree on that. Then we'll move to the next one. CPA sixteen has a priority number two. CPA one, priority four. CPA four, priority seven. CPA six, priority five. CPA seven A, priority number one. CPA eight, priority three. CPA twenty, priority six. CPA twenty-one, priority nine. And CPA twenty-two, priority eight.
That looks right. I would just make the comment that the board's top priority grand mound subarea plan has embedded in it a number of economic development projects around Grand Mound.
So then I will ask the board to approve this priority for the Comprehensive Plan amendment, as I described.
Thumbs up.
Yep, so three zero. Thank you, Commissioners. So moving on to the next Development Code docket. And on the same order, by item, A seven. Commissioner Mejia?
Um, I have that as six.
Ten.
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 Was that ten and ten?
Yeah, six, ten, ten. I'll repeat that for you.
Thank you.
A six?
Uh, one.
Three. Seventeen.
Is one, three, seventeen. Eight, eight. Eight, eight.
Two.
One. One.
Two, one, one. Eight, thirteen.
Eighteen.
Seventeen. Six.
Eighteen, seventeen, and six. Eight, eighteen.
Eleven.
Eleven. Five.
Eleven, eleven, five. Eight, twenty-two. No, eight nineteen, sorry.
Eight.
Sixteen. Seven.
Eight, eight, sixteen, seven. Eight, twenty-two.
Thirteen.
Twelve. Three.
Thirteen, twelve, three. Eight, twenty-three.
Twelve.
Thirteen. Eight.
Twelve, thirteen, eight. Eight, twenty-five.
Seven.
Eighteen. Are you on?
Eight twenty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Seven to eighteen. Eight, twenty-seven.
Nine.
Eighteen. Two.
Nine, eighteen, two. Eight, twenty-four.
Ten.
Eight.
Ten? You said, Madam Chair?
Yes, ten.
Eight?
Fourteen.
Ten, eight, fourteen. Eight, twenty-six.
Seventeen.
Seven. Twelve.
Seventeen, seven, twelve. Eight, twenty-eight.
Sixteen.
Fourteen. Eleven.
Sixteen, fourteen, eleven. Eight, twenty-nine.
Uh, fifteen.
Fifteen. Four.
Fifteen, fifteen, four. JP two.
Three.
Five. Sixteen.
Three, five, sixteen. JP three.
Four.
Four. Thirteen.
Four, four, thirteen. JP four.
Five.
Six. Nine.
Five, six, nine. Last CR one.
Fourteen.
Nine. Fifteen.
Fourteen, nine, fifteen. I felt that I was ready to yell bingo.
Yeah. Especially when you were reading them. Eight, twenty-six.
Okay, Chris, go ahead and give me the average, please. Read the votes as well in the same order, just a quick...
Sure. Starting with A seven, six, six, excuse me, six, ten, ten. Average, eight point six seven.
A seven, A six.
One, three, seventeen. Average, seven point oh.
Eight, eight.
Two, one, one. Average, one point three three.
Eight, thirteen.
Eighteen, seventeen, six. Average, thirteen point six seven.
Eight, eighteen.
Eleven, eleven, five. Average, nine point oh.
Eight, nineteen.
Eight. Sixteen, seven. Average, ten point three.
Eight, twenty-two.
Thirteen, twelve, three. Average, nine point three three.
Eight, twenty-three.
Twelve, thirteen, eight. Average, eleven point zero.
Eight, twenty-five.
Seven, two, eighteen. Average, nine point zero.
Eight, twenty-seven.
Nine, eighteen, two. Average, nine point six seven.
Eight, twenty-four.
Ten, eight, fourteen. Average, ten point six seven.
Eight, twenty-six.
Seventeen, seven, twelve. Average, twelve point zero.
Eight, twenty-eight.
Sixteen, fourteen, eleven. Average, thirteen point six seven.
Eight, twenty-nine.
Fifteen, fifteen, four. Average, eleven point three three.
JP two.
Three, five, sixteen. Average, eight point oh.
JP three.
Four, four, thirteen. Average, seven point oh.
JP four.
Five, six, nine. Average, six point six seven.
And CR one.
Fourteen, nine, fifteen. Average, twelve point six seven.
Ah, geez. There's a lot of ties on this one.
So the, I'm gonna go by the, what I see, the finals, the easy way. So, A eight, number one. Right here. The next.
JP four, I think.
JP four with six point seven, number two. Number three is, that's what we got, two, seven point oh's.
Can we, I'm gonna throw out a suggestion. I haven't looked at what the ties are, but can we just break the ties based on the one that's further closest to being done?
Well, that's, yeah, that's an option.
That makes sense.
So, seven, JP three and A six have a seven point oh. And A six has a sixty percent completion versus JP three zero. So I would assume that probably A six has a number three. Will that work?
Sure. It's three.
Yeah, number three, and JP three, number four. Good. Next, give me...
JP two?
Is JP two with eight point oh. And I don't see any eight point oh, so that's number five. Next, I have a nine point oh. And with eight twenty-five and, I'm sorry?
You missed eight point six.
Eight, eight seven has an eight point six seven, which says number six. Thank you. Next, I have the nine point oh's, which is two. Is the eight eighteen and eight twenty-five. Going by the suggestion, Mr. Commissioner Minser. Eight twenty-five is forty percent complete. That will take priority number seven. And eight eighteen, at a five percent complete, priority number eight. Next, we're moving on to, is the eight twenty-two with a nine point three. That will be priority number nine. Next is eight twenty-seven with a nine point six seven, which is priority number ten. And next is eight twenty-four with ten point six seven, priority number eleven.
No, there's a ten point three.
Okay, thank you. Yes, eight nineteen with a ten point three, which is probably eleven. Is the eight twenty-four, which is priority number twelve, with a ten point six seven. Then the next online is eight twenty-six with a twelve point oh. That will be...
There's an eleven point oh, eight twenty-three.
Getting all crazy here.
And there's eleven point three. So it'd be eight twenty-three, it'd be thirteen.
Eight twenty-three, thank you. That's thirteen.
Eight.
The next is twelve, correct? Is the eight twenty-six?
No, it'd be eight twenty-nine, eleven point, eleven thirty-three, eight twenty-nine.
Thirteen.
Yes, thank you.
That would be, wait, eight twenty-nine would be fourteen, wouldn't it?
Fourteen.
Okay, okay.
I will confirm after, we're almost close. Then is eight twenty-six with fifteen. And then is thirteen point seven, six seven is tied, eight thirteen and eight twenty-eight. And the, both are zero completion, correct?
Landmark is ahead of that. CR one is number sixteen at twelve point six.
Yes, thank you.
CR one is sixteen, yeah.
And then we've got the last two.
Yeah, the last two. Yeah, thank you.
And then there's no work on either one.
No work on either, other.
My system failed in this. Flip a coin, rock, paper, scissors?
So with the miscellaneous clerical errors, we do have some of those identified. The clarification on expansion of non-conforming, non-residential... The clarification on expansion of non-conforming, non-residential uses is brand new this year.
Clar clairs, then, go ahead.
So with that is seventeen, eight thirteen.
Okay.
And eighteen is eight twenty-eight. And I'm gonna repeat this just to make sure. So from the top, A seven, a priority six. A six, priority three. A eight, priority one. A thirteen, priority seventeen. A eighteen, priority eight. A nineteen, priority eleven. Eight twenty-two, priority nine. Eight twenty-three, priority thirteen. Eight twenty-five, priority seven. Eight twenty-seven, priority ten. Eight twenty-four, priority twelve. Eight twenty-six, priority fifteen. Eight twenty-eight, priority eighteen. Eight twenty-nine, priority fourteen. JP two, priority five. JP three, priority four. JP four, priority two. And CR one, priority sixteen. So with that in mind, I will ask the, the board to-
Could, could you, could you take those top nine and, and just rattle them off priority one more time? I know you already did it.
Yeah, okay.
Just one more time.
CP sixteen, priority two, CP one, priority four, CP four, priority seven, CP six, priority five, CP seven A, priority one, CP eight, priority three.
Two?
Three.
Three. Okay, got it.
CP twenty, priority six, CP twenty-one, priority nine, and CP twenty-two, priority eight. Okay, okay. So we'd like to repeat the Development Code docket priorities or-
You got it.
Got it. So I will ask the board to assess your vote on that.
On all of them?
On the, on the Development Code docket.
Oh, okay, so you're doing, you did it already on the one, you're doing it again. Okay. Okay.
I have three thumbs up.
Yeah, three thumbs up. Thank you, Commissioners. Thirty minutes.
Sure, great.
That's all I did. All we have for you unless Josh or Christina had any additional direction from this.
Well, I've said it before and I'll say it again, this is a process improvement and I really appreciate the support of the board. Thank you for all your continued help.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good job.
Okay, with that, we are, it's one thirty-three and we are adjourned. Good job, Commissioners.